For years, yeah. And Joe and I are still trying to get that.
All right, so match up. So we have this video of the shortest class of the year. What's an active action? You know, Mac pull up here to leave.
Yeah.
Mac pull up.
Yeah. What's your point? Okay. We need to hear it. Oh, it starts right now.
See, they are playing.
But I mean, I'm kidding, but if you want to.
Yeah. I'm a whole turn.
You only have one more meeting.
One, one meeting, too many.
Where do you, where do you look at these more?
He took my actual life.
Yeah.
No more handing.
No.
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 Listen, I am a senior.
Don't forget to do.
That's going to be Brian's legacy. Oh, a junior. That's why.
Good evening. The Lopier Community School Board of Education meeting is now in order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Blubar, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Blubar. Okay. Steve, we will begin with our presenting school. So I will hand it over to you, Sir Richard and Audrey.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to introduce, to reintroduce you to our Principal, Mr. Doug Lindsay, and Lindsay got a few posts in this evening. And they are presenting on goal one, one B. So Lindsay, the floor is yours.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for having us here this evening. Fortunately, we've been joined by Mr. Kristen Wilcox, our private department chair, Matthew's at the high school, and Mrs. Kaila Rundles, who has, hey, Matthew's supporters previously, but currently fulfills a draft hall prevention and running control in the building. And as Mr. Wondry mentioned, we are going to talk a little bit about benchmark one, one B. If you read the full board goal benchmark, this one talks about reading law stuff with the reading piece, but then it does get into a desire for proficiency levels in both reading and math and AP and 11th grade levels. And so tonight, in particular, we're going to focus in on the pieces that we're working on to address our needs in math. Previous years, when we've had opportunity to present, there's a lot of board goals that focus on a number of things that occurred primarily at the high school, faster completion and AP results, pieces like that. But this has been a big area of focus for us in the building. Some of the pieces I talked about involve curriculum department work with Mr. Bradford and in combination with Zimmer. Some of the pieces are specific to just the high school, but it's a target that we're looking for, which may get eighty percent of our students being proficient as measured on their SAT assessment in 11th grade, which I think all be known as the SAT results form. But in the historical data that we have available to us for the high school compared to the state, you see in 2017, we were even with the state average. We did have a couple of years going to fall a little behind. 2020, the data is not available because of testing optional for our students that follow involved and the state results were not made available. But we did test our kid, class of 2020 in the fall of 2021, or that following fall. But then this last year, we were again even with the state. Another piece I didn't put in here with the data pieces, our comparison with the region. A current rating, number of schools across the state dropped significantly in their test scores, which don't think came a shock to anybody with the impacts of COVID the last few years. But I think a big factor that impacted us, a strong impact even with the state average, was the fact that we weren't in session and so many other schools were not. And that developed a positive impact. But it's a little bit of the data piece and kind of why this is an area of focus. Number of things that we're looking at and dealing with to address our needs in math. We know we want to see that percentile of kids being proficient to increase grading. One thing that is happening, and this is in concert with Zimmer and the Office of Curriculum and Mrs. Bradford's support, is we're piloting the new resources. Last two years, we've been utilizing, we actually made the switch, I think it was 2017, to we had to switch to H and H. And this is our sixth and final year of that contract. The resources actually no longer being produced by, by the company, and they are looking to maybe switch to a different product, which will be one of two that we're going to pilot this year, Intuma AGA, Intu. Currently, we're piloting big ideas, trying to get ideas of what resources to look at for piloting. One of the things I did last spring as some of these conversations taking place is I looked at the region, the Genesis County, Lopier County region, and what schools were the top ten schools in our area for the math performance. And I reached out to their administrators and asked them about the resources that they were using to try to get some ideas. Big ideas, the one that we're piloting currently, was I used about a couple of schools, a couple of schools kind of had a hodgepodge of what they were using. A couple of schools were actually looking to pilot as well, saying, what do you guys think? So. But math piloting is going on currently, and it's Zimmer for algebra one and high school for geometry and algebra two are piloting. We've had a couple of check-in meetings on that pilot and how it's going. Starting to complete the paperwork on evaluating the big ideas resource. And then we'll, we'll hopefully do the same piece with the Intuma AGA up here and actually transition it about month to another resource. In hopes that we'll be able to have a solid recommendation on a quality resource for the board of committees in March by the time we're done. Another piece that Esther dollars have helped us out with at the high school is math intervention school. Besides teaching, math class, all the roles Mrs. Wilcox fulfills for part of her school day. She teaches some classes and does intervention, working with kids. That started for us last January and will continue through this school year and next based off of the current plan with Esther dollars and then kind of evaluate at that point. And in a little bit, Mrs. Wilcox is going to speak to what that looks like in the building. IXL software is another piece that we've adopted and went to starting last January. We have it for math, again, taking advantage of the Esther funds that were made available. And Mrs. Rundles is going to kind of go through some demonstrations and talk a little bit more about IXL and how it's being used in the classroom. But it's a really nice piece of software that we can use in classroom instruction. They're supporting there, gives kids some feedback. We can also use it with our math interventions, they're working with kids as well. And they're going to speak a little bit more to that. The other two pieces I wanted to highlight that are, we're kind of using to address some of our needs will begin with Esther dollars, we actually just got in the last bit of done recently. We have one-on-one on graphic calculators for other students with in math classes. Those started being handed out to the last groups of kids this morning. So. Positive that we have run into historically did show up through the SAT. They show up to the PSAT and they don't bring a calculator because they always use these things. Well, these things aren't allowed by the testing and, and by rule, that day we can't give them a calculator if they come with it. And so it's created some issues. There's always that kid or two that, oh, I forgot my calculator. We tried to loan them out, we tried to get them in kids' hands. We've always prioritized with our graphic calculators we had in the building. SAT, you know, that's, that's the big test, that's the college admissions, not the lesson, the PSAT. But you know, our math department signing up to kids, here's the graphic calculators we have for the SAT. And our science department was using the TI thirties, which had most of the functions, but didn't quite fit the bill. They were handing those out to the kids that were going to take the SAT and sign those out and collect them back. And all that is off the table for going with this next year. In fact, every kid's going to have a calculator in his hand, write it with you. Plus, they've used it all school year in the community. The last piece that is taking place, just started back up earlier this month, that gives us a chance to target and support our kids with math is the Monday Wednesday after-school tutoring, where we have different math teachers along with different core subject areas after school. Kids can stay, they can make arrangements, we can provide transportation, but it's a way that kids help with the classes that they need. I know as our draft hall interventionists talk to kids, they'll remind me, we have this after-school piece. Oh, I didn't care about, well, we can, we can take care of that. So that's been another way that we work to address our needs. At this point, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Rundles to talk a little bit about the IXL software.
Okay, so with the IXL, we had our teams at the high school piloted in the springtime and started using it. And it was a lot of just like self-exploratory. A few people were able to go to a conference, but not very many. We've had more people go to conferences. I was able to attend one. What they recommend for what they call their substantial growth, like the most use of their program is to make sure that the kids are in the diagnostic arena for 10 minutes per week and that they reach mastery in this, in two skills a week. This could be something that programs recommends for the kids or it could be something the teacher assigns them direction from your class. So the kids earn the smart scores as they're working through. You know, they started with zero, as they answer questions right, their smart score goes up. If they answer wrong, the smart score goes down. The program, if they get to a smart score of eight, that's proficient. So our teachers tell the kids, shoot for eight. That means you are proficient in this, you are doing really well. Then they enter, let's solve the challenge zone. The questions get harder, sometimes it puts together a couple of skills into one. But if they can get to that smart score of a hundred, then that's considered mastery. So a lot of our kids though, it's not like they're just working on two skills a week. They might reach proficiency in five or six skills, but they're shooting for mastery on these two additional skills. Can we go over what it's?
Sure.
That's a great question.
I understand I'm up there with the.
So it's second to. Yeah. Next one.
One more. Hold on, I need to control it. Okay. So this is logged in as a student. So as soon as the student is logged in, they see this page, which is the recommendations wall. The recommendation wall, like as they scroll through here, it can say, try something new. This is a skill they haven't worked on yet. Up next means they just mastered some skills and this would be what should they, what they should be working on next, students' skills they haven't mastered. This wall keeps going, it's very long, it's got a lot. This is not teacher assigned, this is what the program is assessed for the students based on their diagnostic score. Keep at it is a skill that they started, but they didn't finish. So like this, they can see that they're at a smart score of eight, too. So they reach proficiency, some students stop. But they can keep going, they want to push them to get to that master. So they can say, hey, keep at this. So the kids can look through this, work it out is when it's a skill that they think they need to master in order to become proficient in a different skill. So it gives the kids choice, so they can come on there and maybe they're like, oh, I feel like solving equations today, but look, these shapes look intriguing, I like geometry, I'm going to go ahead and work in here. So they get choice and they can complete two of these skills to mastery each week. Or at the top, and they've been well-trained here, the stars, these are the skills their teacher has suggested. Now, these skills live up here until the teachers take them down. But they can see what teacher assigned it and they can see, okay, I did get a smart score of eight, too. They get a little ribbon when they get to the eight. Scrolling through like some of these, they haven't even started, but they've been suggested by a teacher, right? All of these are teachers suggested. Then you can see the ones with the medals, that means they got mastery, that's that they reached that hundred. So. Then there's also, so this is like student choice at this point, right? The suggested skills, if they're going to have it or run something in class, they put them up there. So it's mainly weekly. But the recommendation wall is just totally student choice that they're working on. There's also a section called skill plan. The teachers are starting to use this area for SAT, but our SAT prep class, our strategies for success class has had all the kids in there create a math, like personal plan. So they went in and they entered their college board scores from tax SAT or PSATs that they have taken, and then it gives them like where they should be next. So they can come in here and they can see their personal plan because they put in all their college board scores and it gives them skills that they should work on next. Now, what might happen is they could go through and they could be mastering some of these quickly because maybe that kid actually has the grasp on some of these skills. But they're just saying, basically, in the SAT, you get that 500 to 590, they know kids have to answer these types of questions. So it's a good practice, it's a little more weird for the kid. If the kid had a low score, it's going to put them in like the 200 to 300 range. If they have a higher score, it'll be a higher range, goes up to the max of 800. And again, as, these are all the same skills. So if they work on it in the recommendation wall and it's also in their SAT plan, they'll master it in both spots. So they're not working on a bunch of stuff repeatedly. It masters it across the law. In the skills plane, we can also, our book is there. The book that we are piloting is this big ideas book. So the teachers and the students can go into whatever course they're in and then they can see by lesson. Like this kid can go home and say, I'm really struggling in 2.3. And then right here, the kid can see that these are skills. Or the teacher can use this to assess. And again, they're the same, they would see if they worked on that practice in the SAT. The last piece is under assessments. This is their arena that the kids go into. So as soon as the kid clicks on arena, it says, step into the arena. So exciting.
Sounds like you like it, too?
It's just catchy. You like, don't get into the arena. Like, they like it the first couple of days and then three hours. And what the students, if their arena is up to date, then they'll see stars for all these different colors. If it's not up to date, it won't have a star at the end. And they can go in like if they felt like the score was too low. Now, some of these scores, I guess maybe I should explain scores, right? So a seven twenty means seventh grade, twenty percent of material. So like this ten ten means tenth grade, ten percent of material. Some of these skills, like your measurement, it says you reached the highest possible score. They don't all go up to the 1300. The algebra skills go up to a 1300. The statistics probability go up at high. Geometry is not, big fractions pass out at 800. So some of them, they just think, there's no more standards for them, so they don't keep. Maybe you reached that mastery at eight, three. So with this student, you can see right now they're at eighth grade, ninth, ninety percent of material. And this is an 11th grade student. So that does seem kind of low, but if we go back to the presentation, please. Okay.
I did that, but.
So ignore the ninth grade because this is only showing five ninth graders because we can only see the size of kids. Zimmer is also doing this, they would be able to see their kids. But I'm admin only in the high school, so I see the five ninth graders that are working. And this only includes our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders that are in geometry and algebra two. Our pre-calc, calc, AP, public stats, they're not using this as much. They don't, they haven't gotten the kids through the diagnostic. The kids know it's there, they're just not utilizing it as much. So this is just geometry and algebra two kiddos. But this was their, their diagnostic at this point in the year. So our 10th graders right now are average, all 10th graders that have taken it are at sixth grade, fifty-seven percent of the content. And our 11th graders are at sixth grade, almost fifty percent of the content. And our 12th graders are at about seventh grade level. So we're working with the deficit for sure. And the thing about the test is the kids can move up their regular levels quickly because if a kid has the sixth grade skill they're stuck on, it's going to hold them at that point till they get it. But then they might already have all the other sixth grade stuff mastered and it'll get them there. So the diagnostic, as the kids work, it gets them harder questions. If they're getting stuff a lot, they kind of talk to them and say, okay, this is where you're at right now. If they get over that comment, then they can master things quickly. This is an example of one teacher's classroom. So her kids right now, and this is a small class. I think there's about 22 kids in this class. They've already mastered 152 skills this year and I pulled this data in two weeks ago. They're proficient in another 197 skills collectively. But the big thing is that 74 growth. That means they've had almost a full year of growth. A hundred percent would be a one-year growth since school started. Like this does not count, but it starts over. That's what we didn't know from last spring, if it was going to carry over some of the kids' scores and stuff, but it made them start fresh. They had to take a new diagnostic test. And like the system keeps what they did before, but it goes, okay, you got somewhere lost, so now you have to start there. And it'll go back and on. So these kids have shown huge growth.
All right.
There we go. All right, so part of my day, I got to really starting last January and I absolutely loved it. I know Matt's been in my room a couple of times. I'm serving as one of our high school interventionists. This current year, I'm doing it, Mary Wilmore's doing it, and then we also got Joey Markford doing it. We really created this program from the ground up. And we kind of were throwing around ideas to hit this board goal of, you know, increasing our, our student scores. In education, when you think of the word interventionist, it usually is at the elementary level. We hear that a lot. I did some research and really even in the state of Michigan, there's not a lot of high schools that are doing anything like this. So we've kind of created this from the ground up. And what we are doing is, we are, we're currently working with our sophomores. And in January, we're going to transition over to work with our juniors just to kind of hit the juniors a little bit closer to that SAT April window. But we're, we're pulling our, we're using our data and we're pulling our kids that scored between the forty to sixtieth percentile on the math portion of their PSAT. So we really think that by hitting that forty to sixtieth, we can get those kids to be proficient and really opening a lot of doors for them on opportunities post-of-OS, doors that, you know, maybe for some of these kids, you know, their scores wouldn't have increased without this program. So we're looking at forty to sixty percentile line. We're pulling kids during the day at different points in time. And what we started at the beginning of the school year, and Zimmer talked a little bit about this, we had our kids log into their college board. And that took us a while because the summer, kids forget their password. They don't even remember if they created a college board account at Zimmer, or was where they're supposed to. So that took us a little while this year to get that rolling. But to piggyback on the IXL, what we're doing with kids' college board scores, we're having each kid individually put in, in IXL, in what's called the SAT study plan. And you'll see an example here where it's got the math and the reading and writing. They're taking their specific scores, their overall score, which this example was a six eighty. And then they're also taking what are called their sub-scores. If you guys have had kids in school, you know, I don't know if you logged in to their college board and were able to see all of their specific data. But we're having these forty to sixtieth percentile kids take their data from college board, input it into this study plan. And then what this does for them is, and Zimmer kind of showed you that list, it generates each kid an individualized study plan of what they need to work on to increase their math scores. So this has been, in 23 years, this has probably been one of the coolest things that I've seen just because it's so individualized. Every kid is getting a different list, a different study guide of what they have to work on. And, you know, I, I don't see them necessarily every day, but our goal is to see them from the beginning of the year until April, when they take that test. And then as the year, you know, goes on, they're going to get all the way through that list. And most of our kids in this program last year, and again, it was kind of, you know, from the ground up last year, we had a lot of kids that did some really great things on their, their SAT math score last year. So. I went through and I just picked three of our current seniors. So we worked with these kids last year when they were juniors. I just picked three of them. I could have made an hour video of kids, you'll see just three of them in a second. But they, they, they really liked it and it's, it's been great to see what this has done and some of the avenues it's opened up for, for some of these kids. So. And it's too loud, I have to cheer.
All right, my name is Monica Stoffler. I'm in class of 2023. And I'm bringing this PCT grad school support tenant and I recently scored a 500. And our plan is to, after graduation, is to attend the University of Kevin. And I was able to apply Kevin because of my SAT score. And my real lucky fortune is Mrs. Wilcox is helping with my math classes and we're teaching fellows.
Hi, I'm Melissa Martinis. I'm graduating in 2023. In my temporary year, I scored 440 on the PSAT. And then I was able to increase my score to 540 after math intervention during the 11th grade. But last time I graduated, I was transferred to a 40 school after I, or after I finished my early college program. And if my scores allowed me to accept the entire university, I want to transfer to a 40 school. I want to become a sister degree. What I liked about math intervention was using IXL, the whole group, the whole community help group. So it gives you skills that you need to work on and so it just gives you problems that you can work on.
Hello, I'm Tamelean. I'm a senior at Lopier High School. My sophomore year, I scored a 500 on the math portion. And at the, I don't know, junior year, my SAT, I scored a 600. This allowed me to admit to a lot more colleges than I thought I would. So we're bound to Eastern, Saginaw, York, Oakland, Oakland, Grand Valley, Central, Missouri, and East Tennessee State University. And I still waiting to hear back on a few of them. Most of all, I've got scholarships, too. I would like to that that intervention really helped you like focus on your specific needs and what you were, or like your staff towards you. So it gave you like improved without having to work with classes individually.
So again, that was only three of them. But it's, it's been, I loved it. It's been invigorating at this point in time in my career. So hopefully, I know through next year, we'll be able to continue doing it. But it's, it's been wonderful to, to see what these kids have done. So back to Doug, any questions?
Just kind of in closing for, for our group, the IXL's been, it's been used on a daily basis in classes. Using with intervention's been a real help for our kids. You can see me in bed. It's been positive. I know with, one of the things I did last year is I looked at, you know, the logs that Mrs. Wilcox has been supporting. These are the kids they worked with. I mean, with that, you know, is this having a positive impact in a short period of time? And come, yeah, those kids, they did push their scores up and it does make a difference. It's, it's, last season set, there's scholarships available and that's, that's sort of, right? It's from under college and that's a good thing. And just appreciate the support we've had and working for this and just powering this goal and continuing to help the kids with that.
Just want to say thank you to both of you and what you're doing. And then Doug, I know you're not going to like this because you like to deflect, but thank you for everything you do up at LHS. I know that there's a lot that you do that we'll never find out about. From the bottom of my heart, thank you and.
He really was a great shouting for the forty to sixtieth percentile. We already thought of a little bit, but.
And the reason.
We can't ignore the amount that that's.
But the difference is in math, and I mentioned, the SAT cuts score for being proficient.
Yes.
Is 58 percentile.
Yes.
In math. And so we target that forty to sixty. That, that's a group that they're close, right? And, and let's get them pushed up and have that support coming up through other avenues, get those other kids up to, you know, a reading piece. And we actually had this conversation, our sixth hall meeting today, that, that score's lower. You're proficient in the 40th percentile in reading, you're in the 58th percentile in math. And so having that be that target group to try and help those kids that are that close, just doing that extra.
I can tell you, being in that room, I've been in Christian term a number of times where she would just happen to be starting here in the midst of intervention. And what's really remarkable about kids owning and knowing their personal stuff as opposed to just coming in and working generically on math. She'll come in, they come in, and the first thing she says is, okay, what are you working on? And the kid's like, I got this, I got this, I got this. She's like, okay, go. So it's individualized and all of a sudden you start seeing that small growth on a daily basis. So it's individualized and all of a sudden you start seeing that small growth on a daily basis. And it's kind of the big thing for people. I want to go to four twenty, I want to go to four sixty. And then they realize that that growth is a couple of correct answers. It's not this, I need three more years of math before I can get to the next level. No, it's, it's a couple more right answers.
It changed their body language. I have a sophomore girl come in today. At the beginning of the school year, when we pull these kids, they, they think it's not a good thing at the beginning. So we really have to talk them up that, you know. And I, I've been very honest with them and I said, we hand-selected you because we look at your scores. I even have some kids gone back in their college board account, looked at what they did in eighth grade and ninth grade, and then juniors, tenth grade, just to show them that they have increased. And some kids don't even know what their scores were. So just having a one-on-one advocate. Anyways, the sophomore girl walked in today, Lexi, and just her body language was different. Beginning of the school year, she's like, I've never been good at math. I don't like it. I never did a good grade. And today she walked in, she was all bubbly. She's like, oh my gosh, I got a B plus on my geometry test and thank you. And I'm like, I didn't do anything, it was you. So it's, it's been really good. I wish we could actually do it for every kid. But maybe, maybe Sunday.
So that's not.
I don't, that's, that's.
Yeah. I was just saying, I was going to ask, was money, just from COVID money?
That's.
That's your question.
Yes.
I was going to say, what is the IXL self-help? What are we looking at?
Fourteen dollars a student.
We had it for how long, for K's? K-five?
We didn't fund it, but like PTC did, buildings did. So right now, K-five has a free LA in math. And then all of our secondary buildings have just some math because we couldn't afford the.
So one thing that I see that is different about this is instant feedback.
Yes.
Right? I mean, you don't realize how, how amazing that is.
These kids are instant on their phones all the time. Does it have this where they?
They know right away.
They know right away if they're right or wrong. That is a motivator.
I teach at Conde, remember? I hear I need math every single day in math. So I can't wait. I think that they need to, that you need to broadcast too, is not just the idea that scholarships. It's back that placement wise, right? They're going to save money on college classes. I won't even tell you what my daughter, her friend did in college, in high school classes because it was not good. But the point is that if they place in a higher class.
Right.
It saves them money because they don't have to take as many math courses to get there. So they can come in at a college level, they're taking one math class. Maybe, and maybe not. Again, they can place out of that. So I think that's even more important than the scholarships because that couple of math classes can really cost them in the long run.
I have some ideas with snow days for the, my regular classes that I'm teaching. I'm going to do this with my own pitch, she's not going to like it. But for a snow day that we had this year, I'm going to sit down.
We're not having any snow days, but.
Okay, first day of Thanksgiving, crazy. I'm going to sit down with her and I'm going to have her do the exact same thing. I'm going to have her login to her college board account, she's fresh on that. So she can pull up her eighth grade PSAT scores. She also is using IXL this summer. So I'm going to have her pull up IXL and I'm going to have her do the same thing. She's not going to like it because it's going to be homework, homework from me. But, you know, I, I've started to talk with her about scores and what's a decent score. And I, I'm also just thinking ahead to snow days of, in my regular classes. And it would take a while for my algebra two section. I have a fun group this year. I'm thinking of trying to do the same thing with them. They're actually all AMET tech kids, so they don't have the opportunity to take strategies as a one-teacher. So I'm thinking of having them get into college board, pull their stuff. And then for snow day, have them doing the same thing and I'll give them something in return for doing that. Because that's probably the only way they'll ever do it. But like I said, I have lots of ideas to try to get this to more kids than what we, we had targeted. And we have a lot of upper level kids, Mary Wilmer and I talked about this, that also don't take strategies in one-teacher because they take five or six AP classes. So those kids would really benefit for the, from this because they're really into increasing their score, especially if they have had algebra one, like let's say in seventh grade. Even just low math skills, though, kind of forget along the way. So we have lots of ideas to try to hit as many as we can.
I think it's great that it's, it's almost set up like a lot of games that these kids are playing now.
Yeah.
They're giving their level at this and then they go and play over there and then they, at that level on math and then they cross.
Which is what happens.
Yeah.
Right.
So in my, in my first ever class today, Lexi, who you saw, Lexi was in second one in the presentation. And a couple of my fine young football players, seniors, they all got to a smart score of hundred today. So they get a new, they get a new icon and they were, I mean, they're eighteen years old. And they're like, well, I got a pizza and I got a pie and I got elephants or whatever they were getting. And it's, it's, that's what they do, so.
Right.
It is one thing here.
Yeah.
I love that with the math intervention and this tutoring that you're doing, the effectiveness of it. I know two of the students that you had in that video and I just love to hear how much they're improving and the fact that you're plucking these kids out and you're reminding them that they have the potential to do it.
Yes.
Because so much of these kids, they need that affirmation. They need that reminder that yes, I am, I am smart.
Yeah.
I am worth the extra time that it goes into. And the fact that you guys are making them feel like they can do it, giving them that confidence. And I just really appreciate what you're doing. I think that it's wonderful and I love that we have a IXL program. I too did not realize that we had it at the high school level because I'm only familiar with it at the elementary school level. But I think that, like you said, having the instant feedback, learning that there's different ways to solve problems instead of just the basic school board. I mean, it's so much better than it was when we were kids. I almost wish I could go back, but.
No, I don't, I don't want to spend the fourteen dollars. I just think that it's a fantastic, I really appreciate what you're doing.
A year?
It's.
Or a?
Yeah, just three years, right?
Three-year contract, right? Three years. So fourteen a kid for three years.
A lot of the fourteen's.
For the three years or per year?
Per year.
Per year.
That's per year, per year.
It's per year, okay. But it ended up, the basis fourteen, I think it came down a lot, not in a year because you did eight, three year instead. Instead of a single year piece.
Okay. So don't forget, intervention is part of a three-headed monster, right? Doug talked about piloting a different curriculum, right? So math is not about buying a fancy book that you throw in front of a kid and they, any, any time, right? So you've got the curriculum, you've got the instructional practice, right? That, you know, we have to look at in the mirror as an organization and say, okay, maybe it's been a resource issue as it has in the past. Maybe there are some instructional strategies and things that we can put into place that whereby our kids aren't going to be at a deficit. We also have to take into consideration what COVID did. But, you know, we had some deficiencies before COVID, so we're not going to use that as an excuse. So I think it's, it's hard because sometimes these things get out of whack. Like it, it's the textbook, it's the resource. If we just fix the resource, all our problems go away. And you're just as misguided by saying, ah, the resource doesn't matter, we just got to fix the teaching. And we got to change instruction. And there are districts that say, you know what? We're teaching fine, the book is great, we just need a ton of intervention. And the reason why we have learning coaches in the district, the reason why we have intervention in the district is you got to attack this thing from all sides. So if learning coaches are helping just get better instructionally, if we have a resource that our staff thinks is with Michelle's blessing and, and, you know, forward support is going to take us to that next level, that's great. But despite great teaching, despite a great resource, if we have kids that fall behind for whatever reason, that's where intervention comes in. So it's this constant juggling act that we do to make sure that we're not out of balance with one of those three or four things that I mentioned. And that it's, it's, you know, it's an art and a science to a large degree because you're talking about, you know, think about it from a parent perspective, we're piloting a new math textbook onto your kids. Your kid is literally beginning to dig as the district is looking at a resource that maybe we don't use. The only way, we are our own R and D, right? You know, I like what Doug said, we talked about this, about contacting local districts. Like our top performing math districts, what are, what are you guys doing? What are you? That's the best we can do is steal and look at the research and see what's out there. But to a large degree, it's trial and error. It's trial and error, which is kind of nice when you have a product like IXL where you can not only get a cost on it, right? But when you start seeing instant feedback whereby learning coaching, you know, changing instructional practice, buying new curriculum, the payback on that may not be for years as you look back and say, you know, how do we identify and connect it to growth or improvement? Because we hear this a lot, like with IXL, you, you kind of get a little intoxicated with it. You're like, well, let's just do that all day, right? Just put the kids on out. That's not, that's not.
Yeah.
This is just, you know, a diagnostic tool that can help reinforce these skills. But we've got to do a better job making sure K-12, that they're getting that foundation. And this is a supplement, right? This is that courage.
How exciting that we have people that are willing to level through and try this new stuff too. So we do appreciate that because I know we can give stuff and we do an education all the time, so.
We got stuff a couple of times.
Yeah. I know that we study instant feedback a lot and it's starting to, it is one of the few things, especially in the math related type things. But it's very fun. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will head into our public comment for this evening. A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public. It's not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those may be public comment, but we'll direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenter to be respectful of any person they comment about. Jan Watts.
I don't know what you consider a breeze, but. Fuck, we got thirty words.
The lousy way to serve a presentation, I don't know what you mean by breeze.
Hi. It's really exciting to be here. Been a while. I'm Jan Watts. I've lived in this community for over fifty years, I was coming in today. Probably at one time a member of this board of education, lots of years ago. Tonight, we're finally going to meet the last two of the leadership team for Say Yes For Kids campaign. I would like to consider us the fabulous five, but that might get over the top. Prior to me, you met Karen Robson, who is our treasurer. You met Debbie Fish, who is our outreach coordinator. And you met Margaret Comptons. We refer to her as the sun fairy, among us other things. Tonight, I'll be here. The other person you're going to meet is Kristin Casabon, who is a marketing person and who took all of us and put this all together. We were a little scared before that. Exactly three months ago tonight, we lost the bondage in August. Some of us were upset, some of us were mad, some of us were heartbroken. So exactly three months ago, tomorrow morning, there were some of us who said, we need to do something about this. Did I know that I was going to be part of the lead in this community? And that our initial thoughts would become such a great movement just for our schools. So a week later, you took the old step to put it back on the ballot in November. On August the tenth, you approved the motion to put the same exact proposal on the November ballots. And for not only I, but for the community, we are deeply appreciative of that. Within one week of your decision, this community had stepped forward with a whole lot of people saying, what can I do? Kristin is going to have some statistics for me of what has happened over the last three weeks. Our committee started out with three, a three-part mission. First, to help the community understand why good schools matter. Attract home buyers, they attract business, they're great for kids. So that was our first part of our mission. Second, we needed to show the community what were the needs. Because I think a lot of people look at some of our billionaires and say, oh, billionaire's perfectly fine, you know? So we had to show them, along with the school and information you put out, what was needed. Your job was to provide the information. Our job was to convince people to say yes. And finally, the last thing was to get off the boat. We had the voter registration at the high school, registered some students. We nagged anybody we knew who wasn't registered. The word about early voting for people who may not be in town on November the eighth. As like we told, I told the Kool-Aid Club the other day, if you're not going to be here on November eighth, then vote early and vote often. So now we are about a week away, less than a week away.
That's not in the road for the school district.
So we're asking two favors of you. First of all, remember to vote if you haven't already. And then the second thing is help us eat up this candy. We went to a lot of events and passed out a lot of candy. You know, doing things at Halloween is great because you got to pass out a lot of information, there was a lot of candy. So you have to help us eat up this leftover candy. Because most of it's at my house and I can't eat anymore candy. I am extremely optimistic about next Tuesday. Although we always need to keep our fingers crossed. On behalf of the team and all the people and the businesses and everybody in the community, we thank the board for making the decision again, three months ago, to make this campaign possible. And all we can do is be up to the next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Casabon?
Good evening. As Jan mentioned, I'm Kristin Casabon and I took on the marketing chair for the Say Yes For LCS Kids Committee. And I don't normally read from a sheet of paper, but I have to be honest. Over the last seventy-two days, so many things have happened, I didn't want to forget anything. So bear with me for reading off of the sheet of paper because it's really something I cringe to do, but I don't want to forget a thing. So like I mentioned, we've been at this for a total of seventy-two days. During that time, our committee organized, which we didn't have to file paperwork and such. We solicited endorsements from community leaders. We also solicited donations. We were able to raise over eleven thousand dollars in cash donations and thirty-five hundred dollars in in-kind donations. So with that in mind, we had to put together our strategy to get the Vote Yes message out there. So what we did is we built a Facebook community. We have eleven hundred and twenty-two members to date. And our goal with that community is to share information and combat misinformation. We purchased and distributed four hundred and fifty yard signs and forty large format signs. We placed six print ads and twenty-three radio spots, which will start tomorrow on WQ US. We secured the use of an incredible billboard, I'm sure that you all have seen it by now, thanks in part to Warren Systems and I have to call my husband, it was his idea. So I have to give credit where credit is due. And we're in the process of asking any local business for the message board sign, whether it's an electronic or a standard letter board sign, if they'll post a Vote Yes message over the next week. I've participated in twenty-three events for speaking engagements. And at those events, we've handed out one hundred pins, five hundred brochures, twenty-five hundred business cards and thousands of pieces of candy. We also partnered with a local vendor and she was able to produce and sell forty vehicle window claims. And we've created a Call For Kids event for November seventh, again, to encourage all of our Facebook community members to call or text family and friends to remind them to vote and to vote yes. And finally, our last hurrah will be placing the fifty Vote Today signs for the entrance and exit of each LCS building on election day. And those signs will include four. And those signs will include four hours as well. So it's been a busy seventy-two days and we hope everyone will help continue to share our vote yes message through Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now head into the report section of our agenda.
Sorry, can I read this?
Dr. Watson, will you please share with us the first and often you report this evening?
I'd love to. So our personnel committee meeting was on October 21st. Committee members Summer Plutnem, the chairperson, who didn't moderate this, and myself. Lisa Novak was absent at the day and others in attendance were Kim Secretly and Mary Moss. Meeting called to order via Zoom at 2:00 PM. We have to do updates to the harassment and discrimination policies. Over the last several years, there have been several changes enacted related to the Title IX regulations in the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. These recommended changes will update our policies and guidelines to make our written documents reflect the current requirements. While we are moving forward with recommendations for updating our written policies and administrative guidelines at this time, it is important to note that clarifications continue to be established with new legislation. It was recently adopted, so it is likely that these will be updated again in the near future. The goal is to get the major revisions out of the way so written policies comply with current requirements and then make minor adjustments in the future as further clarity is provided. In order to comply, changes to the following policies and administrative guidelines are recommended. Board by law 0145, sexual harassment to be replaced with board by law 0145, discrimination and harassment. Support staff, board policy 3362, harassment of staff or applicants to be replaced by board policy 3362, discrimination and harassment of staff or applicants. Professional staff, board policy 4362, harassment of staff or applicants to be replaced by board policy 4362, discrimination and harassment of staff or applicants. Students, board policy 5517, harassment of students to be replaced by board policy 5517, discrimination and harassment of students. Administrative guideline, AG 3362, sexual and other forms of harassment. Support staff to be replaced with AG 3362.01, discrimination and harassment, non-Title IX employees. And AG 3362.02, sexual harassment under Title IX employees. AG 4362, sexual and other forms of harassment. Professional staff to be replaced with AG 4362.01, discrimination and harassment, non-Title IX employees. And AG 4362.02, sexual harassment under Title IX employees. And finally, AG 5517, sexual and other forms of harassment to be replaced with AG 5517.01, discrimination and harassment, non-Tile IX students. And AG 5517.02, sexual harassment under Title IX students. The committee is recommending approval of these policy changes. They will be added to today's board agenda for full board consideration. And the administrative guidelines do not require board approval and we adjourned at 2:00 AM.
Thank you, Dr. Watson, for reminding us of the evening. Any questions or comments? Okay. We will go into our action items. We have a big consent grouping. Approval of minutes of October 5th, 2020 regular meeting. Approval of minutes of October 5th, 2022. I meant to say 2022, actually, regular meeting and special meeting. Second reading and adoption of board policies. Policy 8405, environment, health and safety issues. Policy 8390, animal on district property. This is the policy. And then first reading of policies, by law 0145, discrimination and harassment. Policy 3362, discrimination and harassment of staff or applicants. Support staff, policy 4362, discrimination and harassment of staff or applicants. Professional staff, and policy 5517, discrimination and harassment of students. Any consent grouping items anyone wishes to be removed? Okay, I'm hearing none.
I make motion that the minutes, you wave consent agendas, items to be approved is presented. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerdahl?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lepka?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Ollie?
Aye.
Mrs. Cutler says aye. Motion to action. That concludes our action items. I will now open up to any board member communication.
Just want to say thanks to the presenters tonight. Always great listening to all the good stuff that's going on within the school and what you're having to offer. Good kids and thank you to our speakers for everything they've done to encourage the Yes School. So thank you.
I said you could. It's always great to hear from the high school, just to hear different perspectives from all the different buildings. It's great to hear how much improvement we're seeing with the tutoring, with all of the Escher dollars that we're including and how it's actually beneficial. I had to educate a fellow employee today. He said, oh, you guys got millions, what do you guys need this money for? I had to reassure him that the COVID money, the Escher funds have to be spent in a specific way. We have to be in compliance with this day. We can't just buy a new roof, we can't just buy this, we can't give raises. It just doesn't work that way. We have to do these certain things and it's great to see that we're doing that and it's effective. So thank you so very much. And also, thank you for the Say Yes. It's so awesome seeing those signs. We were driving down 124 today, stopped for a drink and my son said, Mom, did you see that sign? Then I said, oh, yeah. I said, who climbed up there and put this up there? Well, it wasn't Mr. Martin.
Barbara John.
There were a lot.
They were there for a little bit. The sign was in there.
It was like rocks.
Yes, Barbara was, you know, it's so great to see that our community is supporting the decision that we made three months ago to move forward and we just hope that the community who voted for all of us leave seats abide by what our suggestions were to vote yes. So I thank you for carrying on that mission and thank you for supporting us.
I think what's important is that the Escher fund, while there are lots of dollars, that we are using them effectively and responsibly and receiving the results of that. So I think that's what's really cool about it is that we are able to make up for some of those learning loss that did occur. I think one of the things that the words that got, the words in my mind was confidence. You're instilling confidence in these students and that can take them so far. And if they just, you know, just like you said, they don't want to come out, but they need that to come out and just to build that self-confidence. So I just think that's so important and I appreciate all that work. As well, the Say Yes, we'd so like to see all the signs and I just appreciate all the work, although it's not fun and there's a lot of work on the scenes that we probably don't even understand or realize. So just thank you for taking that time and for doing the work because it is appreciated very much. And I think we all need to remember, this is for the kids, you know, that's, we need to do this for the kids. It's so important, so. Looking forward to our victory celebration.
I'll be, I'll be the key next week.
Only thing I've got next Tuesday, make sure you flip your ballot over. There's, you know, local, county and statewide, it's very imperative to get out.
Is your name on there?
Take my highlighter. Just get out there and vote.
Hey, there's a couple of us on here, remember?
You?
Yep.
And you?
And?
So make sure you flip it over.
Okay? Yeah.
That's coming from someone that don't have any stress.
That's right, right.
My partner's only a result of being on campus. He would text me, I'd wake up and, okay, thanks.
Well, I just want to say thank you too. I really love just every time a school comes in and the growth that we see in our students here is amazing and the acceptance from them. Those go hand in hand and I really appreciate that. So thank you for sharing all the great work you're doing. Keep doing it. Say yes to LTS from the very bottom of my heart. I appreciate every ounce of energy everyone has put into that. This community doesn't really understand all this that we need for our kids. So every bit of all these mailers and these radio ads, which you can't wait to hear, the billboards, the signs everywhere, just the education. If anything, we have, you've done a great job educating our community and getting the word in ways they can understand what we've been trying to communicate. That's really a big thing. So I just hope everybody looks into their soul when they're voting Tuesday and thinks about kids because that's what this is about. It's not about us adults or whatever feelings we've had in this community as we've grown here or been members here. It's about our kids. So with that, Superintendent Wonderick, another meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. Somebody may notice Kim's absence this evening. You know, a lot of us are really connected to this community in a lot of ways. Kim's daughter was competing tonight. The varsity volleyball districts didn't go our way. Kim kept me updated.
Dang, we're ashamed, we lost.
Well, it happened pretty quickly and Kim should be here any minute now.
I'm sure she's good.
She, I, I don't think she's here. But, you know, it just, you hear the presentation tonight, you know, Kim and I talked last night. She's like, you know, I hate this, but yeah, I might even miss the meeting. And I'm like, Kim, go to the game, you know, go to the game. That's why we're here, listening to these presentations, that's why we're here. You hear the campaign folks speak, that's why we're here. And only because Jan said it, I didn't realize that Kristin was such a capable leader because as you reread the names on that committee, I thought to myself, God bless you for, you can hurt, hurt those back group. That's a lot of powerful women. A lot of powerful people. To you, Kristin, for getting the focus they needed and Doug and, and, and obviously Kristin and Taylor, great job. And we're so pleased with the work that you guys are doing. And final note, don't forget tomorrow at 10:00 AM, the long-awaited ribbon-cutting ceremony for our, our new optimist and powered and appeared committee school-supported playground facility in general that just looks fantastic. So looking forward to seeing everybody there for a brief, brief ceremony.
It'll be beautiful. It's gonna be beautiful.
It's gonna be a wonderful day. With that, I yield back the balance of my time.
No, she's here, there's support.
Mr. Hagerdahl?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lepka?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Aye.